Everyone, we'll call our public consultation session to order this morning. And it's my pleasure to welcome everyone. Brenda will read aloud the consultation notice as it relates to some amendments to our official community plan.
Thank you. Good morning. This public consultation is being held to respond to comments received from anyone that may be affected by the proposed amendments to the city's official community plan bylaw.
Aye.
The property is the 151-acre quarter section owned by Wayne and Carrie Hansen located on the west side of the city at the intersection of Highway 97 and the Dangerous Goods Route. Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 4205, 2014 proposes to redesignate the northwest 40 acres of the property from agricultural to service commercial and the remainder of the quarter section from agricultural to light industrial. And there are no comments received, but there is a presentation from Radloff and Associates.
Thank you, Brenda. So, no correspondence, delegations out of this one?
Exactly, yeah.
So, it's Item 3.11 now on the agenda. It's my pleasure to welcome Dan Milburn, sorry, from Radloff and Associates who wants to present to council this morning. And also Wayne and Carrie Hansen, you're welcome. So, good morning.
Good morning. Just make sure it works. Okay. Well, good morning, your worship, members of council, senior staff. It's my pleasure to be here today to give you a brief presentation. I'll very quickly run through the subject property, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions. So, as has been already pointed out, the location of the subject property at the intersection of Highway 97 and the Dangerous Goods Route, it's in the southeast corner. And if we look at the property in comparison to the historical decisions made by council, there's a South Peace Comprehensive Development Plan prepared in 2007, which first identified this property for both commercial and in light industrial development. So, essentially, what we're looking at is today is the culmination of those historical decisions around policy and direction leading up to today. Of course, one of the key drivers of that plan was to support growth and the economic development of the community, and especially around commercial and industrial growth here to provide employment and income closer to the resource where the resources developed. So, that's a key finding within that document. Subsequent to that decision to endorse that plan, there was an application made to the Agricultural Land Commission for the exclusion of this property, which was endorsed by council and subsequently endorsed by the Agricultural Land Commission in December of 2010. Now, that was based on the fundamental principle that there is, this property itself is the right scale and right location for this type of development and will limit potential negative impacts to agriculture within the region. So, that was endorsed by the commission. And that commission did set one condition, and that was that the official community plan amendment and rezoning bylaws proceed within a certain timeframe, and that those things occur before the land is actually excluded from agricultural land reserve. So, that's a pretty standard condition they placed. They just want to know it's going to develop in accordance with the plans proposed through the South Peace Comprehensive Development Plan. So, again, here, we just look at the existing official community plan designation being agricultural. This is the area highlighted in purple. And there's the proposed areas for which we're looking at changing the designation, so from agricultural to service commercial in the northwest corner, and then the balance being light industrial. And that's an important consideration here, is it's not heavy industrial. Heavy industrial, of course, having the potential for offsite impacts such as air quality concerns and so on. That's not the case here. We're just applying for light industrial development. And then there is the existing zoning being agricultural, reflecting historical use. And then the proposed zoning for the property being highway commercial and light industrial. And this was based on our discussions with staff about what would be the, you know, appropriate zones based on the historical planning decisions and the policy set by council. So, from perspective of servicing, we do have a couple opportunities for water connections. So, there's, if we see along the southern boundary of the property line, there is a water right-of-way running through the property, and as well, a water main in the northwest corner of the property. We think it makes most sense to connect to the south through a couple service connections to create looping. However, we note that there will likely be some offsite works improvements, you know, necessary to ultimately develop this property, and that could be determined through the subdivision process. And then the reason why I point that out is that, you know, this kind of study now is preliminary to determine that the property could be serviced, you know, subject to improvements in the future, once detailed design is prepared. Similar for sanitary sewer, we've got connection options in the southeast corner as well as to the north. So, we've shown option one here, which is a connection through the existing right-of-way. Again, offsite servicing improvements may be necessary to accommodate the full build-out to this property. There's option two for a service connection to the north. It's not the desired option, but it's one of the two options, which is a connection to a force main at the north end of the property. From a drainage perspective, we do have a water course which is proximal to the property. And what's shown in blue there is essentially the extent of a 200-year flood plain area. And so, what we're showing is that we're trying to keep the subdivision outside of that area. We don't want to put any kind of development in harm's way. And we've shown a storm drainage pond because we did look at the property under the assumption that it was going to be fully built out, okay, with paving and roofs and all this kind of impervious surface area. And that would travel through a storm drainage system on the site into that storm pond we've shown there as an indicative design. Of course, it'd be subject to detailed design, but we've demonstrated through our study that we could fit a pond in that location, and it would retain the flows. Even the 100-year storm event could be retained on-site. And so, you'd have no net change to the flow leaving the property, so no negative impacts into the future. If we look at access to the property, of course, as is mentioned on Highway 97 and the Dangerous Goods Route, ultimately, the access will depend on both the decision of the city and Minister of Transportation Infrastructure. We negotiated with both parties to place a Section 219 covenant on the title of the property. It's already on title now, and essentially, it doesn't allow for any development until a traffic study is complete and that any required offsite works are bonded or built. Okay? So, that's already in place. And clearly, at the end of the day, the access will be based on what's proposed and the traffic generated by that proposal, okay? However, it is protected into the future. So, in conclusion, we are proposing an official community plan amendment and rezoning consistent with council's previous decisions about land use and development in this location. It was supported by the Agricultural Land Commission, and we've proposed a viable servicing and access arrangement, you know, subject to detailed design in the future. And you have all the various mechanisms in place to ensure that is done through the subdivision approval and access permitting process. And, of course, what we're proposing supports the economic and employment opportunities for this community, those key drivers. We want to make sure we have enough land to be able to accommodate growth into the future. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, I'm going to close this up now. So, thank you for your presentation. And so, I'll call for any questions, any comments? For a second time, anybody have any questions, comments? And for a third time, any questions, comments? So, Dan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Obviously, the background for us in terms of the South Peace Committee Development Plan, the development of the community over the last, from 2007 till today, is moving forward significantly. And so, we really appreciate the opportunity to have you come and present on behalf of the development.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll close the public consultation. And at this time now, we move into the public hearing for city council. So, I'll call that, open the public hearing and ask Brenda from Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice, please.
Thank you. As required by the Local Government Act, we're holding this public hearing to hear from anyone that may be affected by the proposed amendments to the city's official community plan and zoning bylaws. It's the same property as previously discussed. The OCP Amendment Bylaw Number 4205 and zoning amendment by law number 4206 proposes to redesignate the northwest 40 acres of the property from agricultural to service commercial and rezone that portion from A agricultural zone to C3 commercial highway zone. And the remainder of the quarter section is proposed to be redesignated from agricultural to light industrial and rezoned from A agricultural zone to M2 light industrial zone. And again, no comments.
Thank you. So, and the correspondence, delegation, we've had the previous presentation in the public consultation. So, is there any comments, please? For a second time, any comments? Dan, for a third time, any comments? So, thank you. Thank you very much for attending this morning. We appreciate it, and that'll move it forward. So, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. So, now, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order. Any new council business, councilors? Councilor Wilbur?
Just coming back from UBCM. It was a wonderful week, and I was happy with all the different connections we made and advocating about our watershed to the minister, I think was a productive meeting. But something else that's coming up is the 2015 Canada Winter Games. So, the 150 torchbearers were announced, and I just would like to say congratulations to all those from Dawson Creek that will be representing the northeast of B.C.
Absolutely. And including Councilor Wilbur. Thank you so much. Great job.
I really will be. Yes, thank you. Thank you to whoever nominated you, because I don't know.
Great job. And I think Racelyn, Vance Bronson was another name I saw.
Michaela Love, our young girl died that came and presented. Christina Ward.
Christina Ward. So, good job. Councilor Malkinson?
Thank you, your worship. Good morning. It's nice to see all of you here. Just a couple more things on the topic of UBCM, if I could. Just two things that came up, I guess, just for your information. One was at a bit of a, well, conversations with the folks, the representatives there with Canada Post, they mentioned that because of the expected phase-out of house-to-house delivery in residential areas, they had said that it was going to be, well, there's going to be a long process of consultation that was going to be enveloped over the next few months, but they're moving quickly to phase-out house-to-house delivery. So, that's something that I think would benefit us all to be aware of. But they also mentioned that working with, it will require some work with staff to arrange areas for communal mailboxes, you know, certain pickup sites. And I suppose that'll be a bit of a strain on us. So, they did mention that there were some funds available to offset the expenses for that. So, I did have some contact information. Maybe I could forward it to staff for their consideration. And what else have I got here? Maybe some outreach for people's first, folks as well, that I'd hope to pass along to them. And another really happy note, which was an announcement that came up during the meetings, and I'm not sure what exactly, what exact official communication that we've had with Tumblr Ridge, but the terrific news that Tumblr Ridge has gotten a, you know, one of the few, well, one of the two geoparks in Canada, or has its territory designated as one of the two geoparks in Canada. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for, you know, the peace, the province, and Canada. And perhaps if we sent them, you know, a letter of congratulations, that would be great, I think. Because that's a big deal, a very big deal.
Very much so, yeah. No, it was a great, a great announcement for Tumblr Ridge who needed to get some good news following their announcements of the mine closure. So, I think it's a great idea, and I'll take that on, and we'll send a letter out on behalf of council.
It's a great thing about the peace, you know, it's a, you know, it's great diversity there. It's a, it's very good to hear.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, thank you for that. And if you can pass that on to administration on the Canada Post stuff.
Sure.
Any other councilor business? Councilor Schuman, Councilor McFadden?
McMalkinson.
McMalkinson?
I'm good, your worship.
Thank you. Thank you. Item three is our minutes, and we have minutes from our public hearings of April. I'm going to go through each one of them, and then we'll do one, if that's all right. April, public hearing of council August 18th for adoption, special meeting of council August 20th for adoption, special meeting of council September 3rd, public hearing of council September 15th, regular meeting of council September 15th, and special meeting of council September 17th. Councilor Malkinson, seconded. Councilor Schuman, were there any errors or omissions noticed?
I didn't notice any.
I didn't either. All those in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. Any business arising? Correspondence, we have a letter from the Dawson Creek and District Stable and Arena Users Association. Councilor McFadden?
I'm just curious, before I make a motion, what's our contract with them say? They have some sort of an arrangement with us. Are we responsible for any of this, or for any maintenance or upkeep? I don't know what our contract says with them.
Through your worship, the lease obligates them to look after these kind of issues, but you do provide them a fee for service on an annual basis. The option that they are listing here is the, which they clearly do not prefer, but an option is that the building is simply locked up in the winter, and then it's available for seasonal use. There is a wash rack at Lakota Agriplex, but the, I think their primary concern is the washrooms. There'll be no washrooms there then until, except seasonally.
So, I'm looking for a motion. Councilor Malkinson?
I, this reminds me of a situation that we had, well, not a situation, but a request that we had, I believe, earlier this year from the Exhibition Association. And it's, I guess, all intertwined with sort of the arrangements of how those organizations try to, you know, fund and maintain their operations out there. I do remember being surprised by that request, and I'm similarly surprised by this request. And I, I just wonder what sort of long-term planning, you know, goes on out there to address what gaps they have, or whether we'll be continuing to see things on an emergency basis. And I'm saying that acknowledging, you know, that these are two different organizations, but they do share the same space. So, I'm wondering if there's any sort of coordinated, you know, sustainable approach that we can work towards rather than doing things on this basis, your worship.
Thank you. So, I'm going to speak to it then, because I'm of the view that we absolutely need to put a long-term strategic plan, a strategic direction in place for the use of the exhibition grounds, the facilities incorporating the entire piece of that. We need to be planning proactively for the future of those facilities. And that incorporates, in my view, the Lakota Center, the Canada Event Center, and that entire facility. And so, we need to be planning for the future of the growth of that, first identifying, is it a significant event, piece of our community in terms of the quality of life? We need to provide that direction, I believe, from council. And then, we need to join with the groups in putting a long-term plan in place for the development of that facility for our community. And so, as long as we continue to do ad hoc pressures on small amounts of capital, we're going to never get to the point where we need to be, in my view. And we put $58 million or $60 million into the Lakota Center, the Canada Event Center, and that facility down there, so we could have a piece of infrastructure that was the pride of our community for the equestrian users. I'm, so I'm making the motion that we deny the request for this, and we engage in a long-term plan for the community. I think that's a good idea. Seconded by Councilor Schuman, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Kerry. Thank you. Letter from Kit Faust, curator at the Community Relations for Dawson Creek Art Gallery. Councilor Schuman?
I'd move that we have no opposition to them having a special occasion permit for their art gallery opening or their show opening on the 24th.
Thank you. Seconded. Councilor Wilbur, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Kerry. Thank you. We're a little ahead for our delegations at nine, so I'm going to move to reports. Item 7.1, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding to the water DCC development cost charges update. Councilor Malkinson?
We've, we received this report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding water cost charges, and that we direct, well, the council directs staff to collect water DCCs on all single-family dwellings built on infill or existing properties, on both units of duplex or infill on existing properties, and all lots created during subdivision effective January 1st, 2015.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Schuman, discussion. You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. Item 7.2, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development in regards to our trucked water receive waste facility, sorry. Councilor Wilbur?
It won't load.
Mine's not loading either.
I'm having computer difficulties.
I could see that look in your face, so I thought I threw you on the spot.
Okay, here it is.
Councilor McFadden?
I don't know if I agree with this, but I'll, I'll get it on the floor here. I remove that report number 14-204 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding a feasibility report for trucked waste receiving facility be received, and further that the proposed partnership with the regional district be approved in principle.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Wilbur, discussion. Councilor McFadden?
Well, I'm just wondering why the city would consider spending, I think it's $3 million for a waste facility for the rural residents. God love them, they're our friends and neighbors, but if they need a facility, they could probably build their own somewhere out there, couldn't they?
So, I'll pass that on to our administration, who's really anxious. Happy news for Councilor McFadden.
He's waiting to answer this. The, so the proposal is exactly that the regional district will institute a region-wide service to pay for not only the capital costs of this building, but the annual operational costs. The part that the city of Dawson Creek would be required to pay for is the $83,000 for sandy dump for RVs. The remainder, the regional district has asked for the city's ask by their, by their board meeting coming up this week. So, this is us, this is you okaying us to ask the regional district for this amount?
And the full-time attendant would be an employee of?
City of Dawson Creek. We would own and operate the facility, but the regional district would fund position.
Did I clarify it for you a bit?
I guess so.
Thank you. So, absolutely speaking from sitting at the table to the regional district and understanding the pains that have gone on in the region and the rural areas for people to be able to discharge and get, find a way to deal with their wastewater, this is absolutely, I think, a great partnership with us working with the Peace River Regional District, the rural area residents, and providing that option, that alternative for them, and the regional district agreeing to fund it for us. And so, it's a benefit to them, and certainly, we need to have that additional facility for RV dumps as well, because we've only got the one right now at the Mile Zero Park in the summertime. There's pressure on it. So, this, to me, this is a great partnership for us. Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, and the, the whole thing about having the staff there, have a staff facility where we, you know, can avoid perhaps illegal type of dumping, et cetera, et cetera, is definitely a benefit to us as well.
Yeah, we need to protect the integrity of that system down there, right? Jim?
Yeah, and we should, we should point out, your worship, that the, the design of this facility is exactly going to make it fail-safe, that someone with a load of industrial waste, for instance, won't be able to get it into our system. And that's supported by the industry. Industry's actually going to pay about 85% of the cost of this facility, because they share an interest with us in making sure that none of that waste is inappropriately diverted.
And the integrity of, for us and our reclaimed facility in the long term, right? We're going to make sure that that effluent that's coming out of there is absolutely protected for the future with our contract with Shell, and for the future of having a really valuable resource available. So, I think it's a great, a great partnership.
Absolutely.
Any further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Kerry. Thank you. Item 7.3, we have.
I have to declare a conflict.
Please. Yep, thank you. Councilor Wilbur has a conflict sitting on the board of Society for Community Living.
I'll move that.
So, Councilor Schuman?
Yeah, I move report number 14-200 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit 14-03 for the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living. They're requesting the minimum setbacks for the principal building at 1629 115th Avenue be reduced from 5.5 meters to 4.5 meters in the front be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the notification process for the development variance permit 14-03.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor McFadden, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. So, we have a report number, item 7.4, report 14-206 from the Deputy CFO on tax sale results. Councilor Malkinson?
Move that we received this report from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer regarding the tax sale results for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Wilbur, discussion. It's unbelievable to me in terms of 20 years ago, sitting at this table and remembering tax sale as probably the, one of the most significant issues we would deal with in the course of a year because of the, and you know, in all sincerity, the land bank that the city owned at that time was our number-one priority, how we were dealing with the land bank and the land available. What a transition 20 years later, right, in terms of this. So, thank you for that, John. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Kerry. Thank you. Item 7.5, we have a letter from, a report 14-203 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration. Councilor Wilbur?
Sure, I'll move motion to the report number 14-203 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding the South Peace Historical Society Calvin Creek Center for the Arts be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Schuman, discussion. Now, we're into operations at the center, right? We're starting now to be able to get that operational issues that we're going to need to do to ensure that it functions and operates in an effective manner that we hoped it would be. And this is just one more example of that, that it's moving forward. So, really appreciate that from administration. Councilor Malkinson?
Your worship, they'll waive the rental fee for the Historical Society at the, at the center until January?
Yeah, that's, they're just looking to try to ensure that they can find that method for them to ensure they find the ways to function within that lease agreement they have with the.
That'll be hopefully enough time to put an arrangement in place to accommodate that?
Yeah, that's, the groups are working together on it.
Yeah.
Like.
Cooperation, I guess, yeah.
You bet. That's good. Any further questions? All, all those in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. Your worship? Yep.
Perhaps council might want to move item 8.3 forward prior to the delegations, since you have the.
Oh, okay, sure.
Mr. and Mrs. Hansen and their consultant engineer may have other things to do today?
Well, I'm sure they're finding this entertaining, enlightening, and informative. I was the assumption I was going with. We'll move the agenda to 8.3 for the betterment of our guests. So, 8.3, the amendment to the OCP.
Hand zoning.
So, I'm going to have to come up.
I can't find it here.
A little further up.
8.3?
Councilor Schuman's moving the amendment.
I'll start.
Seconded, Councilor Wilbur, discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Sorry, I was, I was.
Kerry.
Thank you. So, we are, I believe, 9 o'clock, so we'll move to our delegations and the, thanks very much for attending this morning. Jennifer Geisberg from the Peace Pregnancy Support Society are in attendance regarding a proclamation for pregnancy and infant loss week. We're gathering them up, your worship.
There's a bunch of little cuties up there.
Oh!
There's little guys out there. I know, I almost didn't come back in.
Now don't scare them.
They were having fun out there, I was gonna stay out there.
Morning, sweetie. How are you? I can see how you're, where everyone can see how beautiful you are. So it is my pleasure this morning to read this proclamation. Whereas communities and support groups around the world recognize October fifteenth as an annual day of remembrance and honor for little lives lost to miscarriage, stillbirth, neonatal, and infant death, and whereas many, many, whereas many women and families feel they suffer alone in silence and in grief because of their pregnancy or infant loss, and whereas healthy, vibrant communities like the city of Dawson Creek are to be places where citizens rise up to support one another in times of loss and grief by recognizing and honoring losses and by providing resources and awareness for help and hope. And whereas by raising awareness and funds for those who have experienced a pregnancy or infant loss, care services, centers, and personnel in the city of Dawson Creek can better offer assistance to those in our community who need it most, and now therefore I hereby proclaim October twelfth to eighteen as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Week, and urge all our citizens to join in supporting women and families who have experienced this kind of loss, and also to join in supporting those persons and groups in our community who provide care, resources, and compassion to all those in circumstances as well. So I'm struggling a little reading even that one, right? Because that's the core of our world. So it's a pleasure to look at this to you this morning, sweetie. This is your, this is your proclamation? We gotta go and get your picture taken.
Can we get one with all of you?
So, please.
Okay, yes, absolutely. This is our third year that we've been doing the Walk to Remember Little Lives in Dawson Creek. We started it because four years ago, I lost a little one at twenty weeks gestation, and in Dawson, it was very hush-hush. Nobody talked about it, nobody really acknowledged it. You kind of just put it under and let it be. In Edmonton, however, they had huge support, huge bereavement counseling, lots of extra counseling for the family, extended family, and my husband as well, where lots of people would need to just be focused on me, they also extended it to my husband, which was really huge. And then we got home and kind of got back into our groove of things, and all of a sudden Edmonton said, "We're doing this walk to remember, and we want to improve your daughter. What do you feel about that?" I said, "Absolutely." It broke my heart, but it warmed my heart at the same time, because I realized somebody else out there was remembering my daughter, because you kind of feel like you're the only one that knows, but tons of people out there have that same feeling. So Jennifer and I have been doing tons of work together via email and Facebook and whatnot, and Jennifer said, "Why don't we do a proclamation in Dawson Creek?" And I cried. Not gonna lie, I thought, "That's wonderful," because then everyone here can publicly see it's not just an annual one day, forget about it, and continue on, it's Dawson recognizing it as a whole community that we're gonna support all of the families through this. So having you in this for us is huge, and we're definitely setting Dawson Creek off in the right foot to acknowledge it does happen, it's our right to acknowledge the past and the present and the future of your family, and what you do know and what you don't know, and what could have been and what might be later. So to have Dawson Creek help us out in this, I can say from the bottom of my heart is thank you so much, because these past three years, every time we do it, there's that little extra healing in the heart, and it definitely helps, so as much as it's helped me, I know we've helped numerous people already, so thank you very much. Sorry, well, thank you guys.
So thank you so much. So, yeah, this absolutely is a pleasure, right? It's so good that we're able to support, because babies are our foundation, right? That's what we're about. So, thank you so much for coming this morning, it's a pleasure to be able to do this, and that we're all gonna be there on April eighteen--
October.
Or October eighteenth.
October.
You'll be a little late.
October eighteenth at two o'clock, and so we encourage everyone to come out and--
What's the base, the site that you can go in and join?
Walk to Remember Little Lives on Facebook. You'll see it right there, and there's Dawson Creek, there's also some other ones, but there's one Walk to Remember Little Lives Dawson Creek, and then there's an event right on the page. I also have posters, and I'd also like to let you guys know we're also doing pledges this year. All proceeds go to the Hospital Foundation to help neonatal and the mat ward. This also includes bereavement counseling, little baskets for memorials, footprints, outfits for the babies. As some of you may or may not know, there's lots of babies who are born like twenty weeks, they don't fit baby clothes, so we have a lady making baby clothes that fit, so they have their own little special outfits. So this funding goes towards little things like that, that help the family feel their little one is remembered in the right way. So if any of you guys are interested in picking up a pledge sheet for me today, I have came with twelve--
Oh, listen, could you leave some at the front desk?
Absolutely.
As a second little piece that's a bit of an added, because we have one of the winners of our photo contest here, Jennifer Geisberg submitted a photo that was one of the winning entries, or was the winning entry, I guess.
Was the, the winning entry.
And it's going to be hanging with pride at City Hall. And so I wanted to thank you guys so much, congratulations. We really appreciate you being involved and participating in it. And there's Daddy's picture. And so I just wanted to recognize Jennifer, thank you so much for participating in our contest, and it's hanging with pride. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Bye, sweetie. Thank you so much for coming. Here's your high five. Love you all.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have a proclamation, Deb Wap, Cindy Gabriel, Tammy Schmaler, Janelle Hengway, Rebecca Crawdy, and Courtney Stewart, three of them, from the Ministry of Children and Family Development, in regards to proclamation for foster family appreciation. It's gonna take some time for them to park up here. Morning, guys. Welcome to Dawson Creek. Thank you for coming this morning. Welcome. How often a mayor gets six in a row? Whereas thousands of British Columbias foster families provide alternate family care for children who are early unable to live with their families. And whereas foster families are an integral and valued part of the team of public and private professionals serving the families and children of British Columbia. And whereas foster families are asked to provide emotional support and care for children who will eventually return to their own families. And whereas fostering is a community responsibility, and foster families build stronger communities. And whereas the city of Dawson Creek wishes to recognize the care, compassion, and unselfish commitment of foster families within its boundaries and surrounding areas, now therefore I hereby proclaim the month of October as Foster Family Appreciation in Dawson Creek. Thank you so much for coming this morning. I'm gonna move aside and let you guys say your name.
So we just really appreciate the ability to come and speak about Foster Parent Appreciation Month. We were just checking this morning, it's been twenty-four years that the province of B.C. has been proclaiming this as Foster Parent Month, so that's pretty amazing. I think, I was just saying to Deb out there, what shall I say? Because, you know, I feel like it's a same old, same old, but we have a new mayor, so I'm gonna issue my challenge that I issued a few years ago to your other, the upper mayor, is that if you and your council could put it in your thoughts about, do you know anybody that potentially could be foster family, and if you do, could you please send them on to our lovely ladies at the, at the ministry that will more than gladly take your application and talk them through the process and what it is? We have about twenty-five to thirty care homes between Dawson Creek, Chetwind, and Tumbler, and we include those two communities because our ministry office manages those communities as well. And we're always looking for homes, we have lots of, we have lots of children in care right now, we have about fifty. And so we just are always needing to have homes available to us. We always look at who's in the, in the foster home already, and is that a match? And if it isn't, then that's why we need to have more foster homes available to us, because sometimes those, you know, children need to be in their own place and shouldn't be in another home, or sometimes they do match with somebody. So just having more options for us is a good, a good thing. So, challenge you to all think about, do you know somebody in your life somehow connected to you that would, you know, make a home, a loving home for one of our children in our care that will work with their families to get them back to them?
Thank you so much. And, you know, from a personal perspective, absolutely, we just had one delegation in here talking about babies and children in our community, and so I really appreciate on behalf of the council and the city for the work you guys have done, what you continue to do for the children in our, is that honest to goodness, is a lot of work that you can't put a value on remembering. So we really appreciate that, and it's a pleasure to have you here this morning. We'll bring that challenge forward to all of us, how we can help support that message as a leadership of our community. So thank you. A pleasure, pleasure to have you here.
Thanks.
So, Jamie and Rod, you guys have a PowerPoint, do they?
No.
No?
Just photos.
Okay. So this morning, next delegation, item six point four, we have Jamie and Schneider and Rod Arsenal and Wendy. Wendy here with you?
No, she's--
Oh, sent you on your own?
Yes.
Good morning, guys. Welcome.
Hey. Basically, we're just here, you guys have the same little letter that we sent as part of this--
With the photos?
Yeah. With the photos. The only thing on the photos that isn't really outlined is the existing property now sits where it's empty, the property in question, the driveway in question, and if you flip through the pages, you can see the driveway as it's poured now, and see, it's basically consistent with the other ones on the street here. We understand the bylaw doesn't allow the driveway width on the boulevard to exceed twenty-nine meters. We thought that doing it in concrete and actually isolating it with paint lines would be suffice, because on the back photo that you see, we saw that other developers or other builders had basically put gravel in where we had put concrete on the boulevard there. So, in essence, the biggest thing, I guess, for the city, they're looking for places to put snow, that's the main reason they want the driveway smaller, and looking at that first photo that shows all of the driveways on that street, we're hoping that the fact that it's consistent with the rest of them, that you guys will consider us, consider allowing us to keep the driveway as it is today rather than having to remove it. So in essence, I guess it would probably result in a variance in this particular situation.
Right.
So, yeah.
Good. Does anybody have any questions? Council?
None, no.
No? Counselor McFadden?
Pardon me, just in your letter, your, I guess it is your last statement, in order to keep your driveway consistent with other properties on this street, thank you, so is that the norm up there? I guess staff's not here that--
Well, to give you just a little brief history, I don't wanna get too in-depth here, but when we initially bought these, if you look on that topographical picture of the, we own the six properties that are, there's three and three on either side of seventeen A there, we bought those ones there. The bylaw basically was all, or not the bylaw, the zoning was duplex, so we bought those with the intention of just building duplexes there, and since that time, they changed the zoning so that it allowed suites in the duplexes, so everyone else began to do that. We had to follow suit just to keep up, right? And therefore, the driveways ended up being bigger than you would normally see, just to accommodate off-street parking as opposed to on-street parking, so like, it's a catch twenty-two, it's like, you make them smaller, then everybody has to park on the street, or they have to park on a soft surface, be it a lawn or gravel or whatever, and drag that mess out onto the street. So we actually were the first guys, we started building big driveways, and that's just a little history on how we got to where we are today, but when, like, we own those other five that you see right there, and we just made the last one the same, so we're just asking for you guys to--
The, the bylaw in terms of, oh, sorry, Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so you guys were aware before you poured the driveway that we did request that space for snow, et cetera, et cetera, and you poured it anyways, so this is like, you're coming after the fact to ask forgiveness when in fact you knew prior to pouring it?
Actually, no, it wasn't like that. What we had in mind was we were gonna paint lines, because with that concrete slab there, we wanna make sure there's no gravel getting dragged onto the road or onto our concrete, because it's expensive, and we looked at these other properties, they put gravel in there, people are still driving back and forth on the gravel. We just wanted to paint lines, and then the city could watch who was parking where without dragging any crap onto either the street or our property. That was the intent. It wasn't the intent to just go ahead and do whatever we want. That was not our intent.
No, at the end, and like, exactly like Rod said, we, we probably should have known how the bylaw read better, like, we didn't realize that it just, because, I mean, a hard surface is a hard surface, you see a lot of places that they'll just gravel the whole front there, whatever, and at the end of the day, we didn't realize that it was like, you need to have grass, and, you know what I mean, like, we thought a hard surface would probably serve everybody better in the long haul, as opposed to gravel, or topsoil and grass, or whatever other product you would put there, so, yeah.
Any other questions? So, thank you, guys, we'll bring it back under mayor's business. It does require a, under the bylaw, obviously in terms of how the bylaw is wording, we need to consider that, and we'll bring it back under mayor's business for you.
Great, thanks, guys.
Thanks. Oh, we don't have time for the next delegation.
Just leave the t-shirts.
I was gonna start, you know, really nice, say, we're here to say thank you to council for all your support.
Yay!
So our first, our next delegation, item six five, we have Danny Shields on the Board of Directors are in attendance to report on the twentieth annual Summer Cruise two thousand and fourteen. Obviously, it's a pleasure to welcome you guys and folks here today to give us an update and an overview of the results of the Summer Cruise, so thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I think we should just give them a round of applause.
We appreciate that. There's Ward, he's late, but he's coming. And that's why we're here today, is to thank you for the support that you give us. We had a surprise success this year. We plan for success every year, we plan for a certain level, you know, our top years so far have been three hundred, a little over three hundred. We planned for three fifty this year. We ended up with four hundred and twenty-eight. It was just a phenomenal year. We were scrambling at the end, we were actually taking names down for t-shirts, because we ran out of t-shirts, and we've been mailing them out, and just, you know, got the new ones in lately. So four hundred and twenty-eight is huge, that's as big as Prince George has ever been, community, excuse me, that's four times larger, well, no, six, seven times larger than we are. It's the same size as an international meet, I was just two down in Richmond last month. So we're very, very proud of that four twenty-eight. Did cause some problems on Sunday morning when people kept coming and coming and coming, we were going back into old prize boxes, so, well, here's something for you to take, and we'll take down your t-shirt size, and away we go. So we went from a planned six blocks that day to eight blocks. We were really happy that Kevin was hanging around, and he made some phone calls, and we pushed out to ten blocks. The city fire department was there on display, had their ladder truck up, were showing the kids stuff, and we had to go to them a couple times, said, "Could you move down the block a little bit more? Could you move a little bit more again?" Because we kept having vehicles show up. Because we kept having vehicles show up all the time. Friday night, no rain on Friday night, which is always a real treat, because we usually get a thunderstorm Friday night. We had over 100 vehicles on the Friday night for the barbecue at the co-op and a cruise around town. Saturday went extremely well. We had our regular car rally. We had the ever-popular drive-your-car-blindfolded-through-the-obstacle course. People did well on that one. A new one this, it was sort of a blindfolded theme this year. One of the other games we had is one person in a wheelbarrow blowing bubbles, and the person pushing the wheelbarrow was blindfolded. And they had to go through a course. And we did that one up at Rotary Manor. So the residents of Rotary Manor could come out and have a little bit of a giggle. We found out later, we probably don't want to do that one, we came that close to causing some divorces. And so, we're going to have to have a rule, no spouses on the same team. It caused quite a bit of friction. And then the other one we did this year that you would be interested in is called Feel the Steel. And if you've watched Barrett Jackson, you may have seen that. And that's where we blindfold somebody, we put mitts on them, then we take them into the room, and there's a vehicle there, and they have one minute, just by feeling it, find out what kind of vehicle that is. This year, we had a 1934 Chevy two-door coupe and a 1951 four-door Ford Monarch. And nobody got either one one hundred percent correct. That's not true. One did. It was my nephew, and that's only because the Monarch was my wife's car, so it had a minute before. But even he wasn't sure, but he thought that's what it had to be. So that was really popular. People had a lot of fun with that. We had some wild, wild choices. Excellent barbecue that night, steak dinner. Mr. Mike's actually came down and cooked for us, and so it went really, really well. Sunday, it was sort of like the perfect storm. Everything came together. Incredible weather, as high as 35 degrees, a little bit warm, you're out on that nice new pavement on 102nd, thank you very much. That was such a plus for the people that were there. The other thing that really helped is it was, is the 50th birthday party for the Mustang this year. And so we had a 50th birthday celebration. We had 82 Mustangs show up. And that's probably what pushed us way up over that 400 mark, because there was a lot of vehicles we'd never seen before. So 82 Mustangs was pretty cool. Didn't quite have one from every year, but we had one from every era, including a couple of the Mustang II, those of you that can remember them, they used to be called the Pinto Mustangs. Huge spectator crowds. I would hesitate even to estimate how many spectators we had come through, but it was jam-packed all the time. Our vendors sold out mid-afternoon. And we had probably three times as many vendors as we've ever had before, and they all did extremely well. We had vehicles from 56 different communities here on Sunday. So the outreach is a long way. And we had people that drove up specifically from Surrey for this show. We had people come here from Calgary. They weren't passing through, they drove from Calgary for the show. I was at an international Mustang meet in September, and I had people walking up to me saying, "We've heard so much about your show, it sounds so fantastic, we couldn't make it this year, what's the date next year?" And these are people from Vancouver. I had one guy from Oregon that says, "I think I want to bring my car next year." So the reputation of the, of the party that we have, and how people take care of you here, and the hospitality they get from the city of Dawson Creek is spreading far and wide. With that said, we do have some thank you gifts, and... The advantages, I think we got the sizes close. If we didn't, let us know, and we can always do an exchange, yes, we accounted for that there.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thanks, guys.
Can we get, do we have to get all the card club with you for a picture?
It's a good idea.
And Blaine, our president, has a presentation for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
I have the mayor's phone, I've been delegated to do the photo ops.
But can we get all of you?
Apparently, he's running for election or something.
So, next year, summer cruise always happens the second Sunday in July.
My birthday.
Your birthday? Good, we'll have a birthday cake down there, and while I was there, I'll post for you. A bit of a sad note, this was my last summer cruise.
Why?
For a while. As some of you are aware, I was recently elected president for the provincial board for swimming. And our season's overlapped quite a bit. And I took office effective October 1st, so I simply don't have time to do both. So you'll have, somebody else will be talking to you next time about summer cruise. The club's having a general meeting in October 22nd. I imagine you want to come over just then.
Sure he does.
They'll, they'll be making plans for next year at that time. So, do you'd like a picture?
I have all the blueprints.
All the blueprints. Do it here. Do it here.
So I want to just say, first of all, thank you guys so much. You know, you talked about the events, the things that make this community amazing in terms of the quality of life, exhibition, rodeos, concerts, and the swim, all of those things we do in a community. And this one here has developed over the number of years now, the past 20, that has been put on. And you know what, it was an amazing day weekend for us and the community, the amount of activity and as Dan had talked about, the amount of attention that's created. I was walking around doing this and talked to a couple from Hundred Mile House, getting a beautiful car, and I said to them, "Do you trailer that all the way up here?" He said, "It's never been on a trailer." It gets drove everywhere we go. And this is our first year here, and we are coming back next year. What a great show. And so what a tribute to you guys, put the work and energy into it on behalf of our community. So we just can't say how much we appreciate the effort and what a great event it is for our community. And now, as you say, it's getting that attention, that it's a significant event in our community in the summertime, just like all the others. So thank you so much.
Yes. Sorry.
Can you get it?
I got it. Can we get one from this side, too?
Speak.
Oh, yeah, wait, they speak still, right?
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Thanks so much.
See you, Norm.
Thanks so much.
See you later.
Thanks so much. Thanks. Thanks so much.
Here, you can Facebook all the pictures now.
Yeah, I'll do that. Thank you, guys.
That's your job, Gerald.
No!
To our meeting, and we're into, we got through by reports.
No, wait, 7-6.
7-6. 7-6, sorry. Report number 14207 from the fire chief responding to incidents outside the city of Dawson Creek. Councilor Wilbur?
I will make the motion that report number 14-207 from the fire chief responding to rescue operations outside the fire protection boundaries of the city of Dawson Creek be received. Further, that staff be directed to develop a policy that allows the fire and rescue department to respond to incidents outside the city of Dawson Creek fire protection area under authority of emergency management B.C.
Thank you. Secretary, Councilor Schuman, discussion? Councilor Malkin?
I have, well, I think this is a sound way to go. You know, an emergency is an emergency, your worship. So I don't have any problems with any of the moral implications, or sorry, any of the moral issues that are outlined in this report. But the cost was a little surprising to me. It says here, under financial implications, at about $33,000 a year is spent by the city of Dawson Creek for responses outside of our areas, and we recover about $10,000 of that per year from E M B.C. Do we recoup the $23,000 from, in any other way, your worship?
Jim?
Through your worship, the short answer, that is no. That is, that is an amount you eat in your budget by way of providing this service to the traveling public.
And, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, he...
I was just going to say, and then, so certainly know that over the years, the issue of services that a community provides, and you would always hope that you could recoup or recover as much of that as possible. But some of the services you provide tend to be, a good portion of them, or the majority of them also can be for your own residents, even though they happen outside your municipal boundaries. And it's just a part of, to me, the responsibilities and accountabilities we have as a community when we say public safety. And those components of safety for our community are so critical. So...
I have no, I really, really agree with what you've said. I have no problems with any of the moral implications. You know, if there's an emergency, I don't want any, you know, and, you know, the Dawson Creek is, Dawson Creek Fire Department is best situated to respond, and I don't have any, you know, problems with us going across any sort of imaginary line to respond to it. But I am wondering if there's any opportunity for advocating for any sort of compensation or anything like that? I don't know. What's, what's been the lookout in the past? Jim?
Through your worship, this has been an issue brought frequently, actually, to the U B C M floor. There has, provincial emergency program is funded by the province, and there's been no indication of any willingness over the years for them to increase the amount that is being compensated. But one of the reasons for that is it's a rate. So, for instance, that Tumbler Ridge situation, halfway to Tumbler Ridge, we go, and we receive a rate for that. On the other half, the Tumbler Ridge Volunteer Department goes, and that rate is actually a fundraiser for them. If you have a paid, full-time force, the provincial emergency program rate doesn't begin to compensate you, compensate you about a third. If you're a volunteer force, it more than covers your cost. So that's the situation the emergency program is looking at.
Councilor McFadden?
Yeah, it's some, I guess, you have to go if you have to go. If somebody's in dire straits, you can't, you can't not go. But is there any other jurisdiction in the area that is not providing any kind of service because they know that at the end of the day, we will, if push comes to shove?
Through your worship, there's no one intentionally doing that in our catchment area, but the, the issue generally with volunteer departments, especially the rural departments, is equipment and manpower. So there'll be occasions where they can't respond, there's nobody available, there's no equipment available, and so we do.
Yeah, well, I say, if you have to go, you have to go. That's just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Councilor Wilbur?
I just wanted to say that it's not, we do go, and we have a great team that goes, and we're the central hub, so we can provide that service. But I think this is more of just putting a policy in place, saying that we're going to do it, because we don't have one as we sit right now. So I think it's more of housecleaning, and, you know, thank you to the guys and gals we have that can provide that service.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Your worship?
Thank you. Councilor Malkin?
Well, I, you know, being that that's been passed, there's a resolution that I wanted to maybe propose that might solidify or get council's opinion altogether on. And that was that we advocate for emergency management B.C. to develop a plan to either compensate us properly for our work outside our boundaries, or to put resources in place to have those areas served. And that's a, yeah, that's what I'd like to propose.
So you're making that by way of a motion, your worship? Okay. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it for discussion.
For discussion? Okay.
It's a, I'm not freaking out or anything, but I just think that, sorry, sorry. I hope you guys don't get the impression I'm being too dramatic. But all I'm saying is that, you know, I have no problem with any of the moral implications. An emergency is an emergency. But I just think that this is a thing that the city of Dawson Creek is falling, you know, back on. And I think that at the same time that we're, you know, enshrining this policy to, or to, sorry, you know, establishing it in policy that we will do this, that it ought to be our position that we advocate for a little bit of a fair mix, you know, with emergency management B.C. I just think it's appropriate.
Further discussion? Can I carry the motion again?
I could read it out to you, your worship.
Okay.
That council advocate for emergency management to develop a plan to either compensate city of Dawson Creek properly for work outside our borders, well, for fire responses outside our borders, or to put resources in place to have those areas served.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Next item, under bylaws, 8-1, we have a report from this chief financial officer in our 2015 permissive tax exemption bylaw. Councilor Schuman?
I move report number 14-188 from the chief financial officer regarding the permissive tax exemption bylaw, number 4239, 2014, be received. Further, that the permissive tax exemption bylaw, number 4239, 2014, be given, excuse me, first of three readings. Further, that staff be directed to publish the required notice as required under section 2271 of the community charter.
Thank you. Secretary, Councilor McFadden, discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 8-2, we have a report from the director of corporate administration regarding our smoking regulation bylaw communication plan. Councilor Malkin?
Your worship, I move that we receive this report from the director of corporate administration regarding the smoking regulation bylaw for information.
Thank you. Seconded? Councilor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. We dealt 8-3, 8-4. We have report number 14201, director of corporate administration regarding backyard hens bylaw, number 4241 and 4242. Councilor Schuman? Sorry, Wilbur? I was trying to be...
Go. Go now.
Schuman's over here all by herself, so I don't want to ignore her.
I'll make a motion that report number 14201 from the director of corporate administration, backyard hens be received. Further, that the animal control amendment bylaw, number 4241, and zoning amendment bylaw, number 4242, be given first two readings. And further, that staff be directed to publish the required notice for a formal public hearing.
Thank you. Secretary, Councilor Schuman? Schuman? Discussion? Councilor McFadden?
I don't think I'll be supporting this, your worship. I don't, I mean, we have bigger fish to fry without putting this on, the back of staff to follow up and check on. And I just think that, I think, you know, the hens and the chickens will attract mice and rats. Pardon me, and other coyotes or whatever, I just, I don't think it's that important to deal with. So if you want a dozen eggs, I'll buy you a dozen eggs.
Thank you. Councilor Malkin?
I, I think it's unlikely that I'll be supporting this as well, your worship. I, I'm not sure that, you know, the uses as outlined in the proposed amendment to the animal control bylaw or, or the zoning amendment bylaw are, you know, in line with keeping, you know, sort of a residential character in the neighborhoods. And I think that the, it's maybe a little technical, but I think that 2.4 meters maximum is a little too high for a chicken coop as well. I was surprised to see the information about beekeeping, though. I think it's been the longstanding position of this council to advocate and take care of the yellow and black creatures that populate fields. And I would be very interested to see more information on that. But as it, the information is proposed with hens, I am, I am opposed to.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm going to speak in favor of it. I haven't had, honest to goodness, what I would have anticipated to be some components of the community who would be saying, either passionate about it in terms of very supportive of it, or extremely opposed to it in terms of the issues that could be associated with having the hens in the backyard. And as I think about it, in terms of a comp, from my own practical perspective, I don't think there are that big a segment of our population who would engage in having backyard
are that big a segment of our population who would engage in having backyard hens, but there are some that absolutely would. And so I think we need to be considerate of the entire population in terms of how we decide components of our community, and I don't think they'll, like cats would bring coyotes in, or dogs bring coyotes in, I just don't see that the hens, because there's that few of them that they would. And so I don't see it as being a issue of that degree, but I haven't put my mind around it, but I'm supporting it at this time.
Further comments, further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? You want them recorded?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Carried. Thank you. Good discussion, you guys. Thank you.
Only Charlie were here.
I think Charlie wanted pheasants.
Oh, he did, he did, yeah. Okay, that's even worse.
No presuming how your fellow folks are...
I'm making this an election issue.
Through your worship, the staff won't move forward with any more research on the bees unless it's directed by council.
Yeah, I, sorry.
Sorry, Counselor Schuman?
I would like us to, to move forward with some research on the bees also.
I will second that.
Seconded?
Very, very important work.
Discussion? Counselor McFadden?
No, I was getting ready to vote, your worship, sorry.
All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Yes to bees, no to hens.
Yes to bees.
Discrimination against the hens.
Wait till you have.
And I'm going to take you up on that, by the way. I could use a couple of dozen, and you can drop them off at my house.
Item nine is, we're going to move into mayor's business. Item nine-one that I've identified, we received a letter from the architect who dealt with the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts, and this letter I thought was appropriate for us to bring forward under mayor's business, because it was extremely complimentary of the Deputy Director of Community Services, Duncan Redfern, and, you know, we're all, I can't say what I normally would say, but we're always too hesitant, I think, to sometimes give out the attaboys. There's a, there's a, what we normally give out are the off, but I can't say that in council, but the attaboys too frequently come. And so for me, this was an absolute ideal opportunity for us to give a very well-deserved attaboy to Duncan for the amazing, I think, having worked with him for the last year, as he would continue to bring forward the updates, the reports, the information on the development of the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts as we were going through this last year of trying to get it completed. And so, the architect indicates the purpose of this letter is to commend one of the Dawson Creek, City of Dawson Creek staff members, Duncan Redfern, for his outstanding work on the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts. You know, he goes on and talks about the extraordinary job at balancing long-term design objectives and the immediate cost objectives in the construction environment filled with conflict. Most importantly, he never lost sight of the long-term goal of creating a building to serve its users. Duncan was a real pleasure to work with, helped create a sense of teamwork in a very challenging situation, and deserves your appreciation and respect for a job very well done in completing the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts. This is an independent architect who does this stuff every day, and took the time to write a letter to us to commend him. And so I think it's absolutely appropriate that we, as the board, do that exact same thing, really, from a public perspective.
Way to go, Duncan.
I expect you're about to get a hug.
Get your hug.
Don't know if he's more embarrassed about the letter or the hug.
I think the hug topped it off. The hug pushed it over.
No doubt it was the hug. Item nine-two, so I've had some conversations with Jim in terms of really moving forward for 2015 and beyond, trying to set some stage for some of the planning components following the November fifteenth election for some timeframes, really for administration, because as we're trying to engage different components of that planning process for the new board after December first, so we've set some timeframes in place to try to meet that and allow us to do some planning components for that, for the new board, and it's a little bit awkward for us, because certainly for all of us who are now in that realm of the election, we don't know who all is going to be here after November fifteenth, although Duncan and Sue have indicated they won't be. And so, it was, I just wanted to set that in place. So, we've set some dates for the planning component, and we're going to engage a company to help us, help the new council, I said us, that was inappropriate, help the new council deal with that. So, Jim, do you want to just give us a quick?
Through your worship, the consultants who have been engaged are a company called Deliver Democracy, but you'll know them better as former Mayor Allison Habkirk and former C.A.O. Jerry Berry. They're going to come in on January twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. We've been previously directed by council on a couple of things, so there will be a review of the mission, vision, and guiding principles, forming the bulk of the first day, and there's a session that they, the two consultants run called How to Preserve Your Future While Preserving Your Core, which will be a piece of Plan B on the fiscal gap, and then there will be the strategic planning. But exactly the format is open to discussion. The mayor and I will be conference calling with the consultants in a couple of weeks, and the mayor would appreciate feedback from council about exactly what you'd like to see in that strategic planning process.
For me, and I've talked about it, and I, really, last year, we, I think the whole, doing a deep dive into our vision, the mission, the strategic objectives, is such a critical conversation and discussion that the board engages in, because it sets the context, it sets that view for us as we're sitting here on a regular basis to identify what it is we want to accomplish, and how are the things we do on a daily or weekly basis as a board in setting policy and direction, accomplishing that vision we have for our community. And none of the board members, I think, here, or very few, were involved in that current strategic vision, mission, and principles, and I think it's a critical conversation that that's our, one of, to me, one of the primary roles and objectives we have as a board is really to set that direction for our community. That's the leadership that I think our community expects and should expect of us. So, I think it's a great bit of work, and I really hope that we can, to have the opportunity to really deep dive into that, so I'd really appreciate your guys' input into it.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so, I like all that. I want to make sure that we are involving our senior staff in, in this strategic priorities planning. I like, maybe not the, you know, council's priorities, but I really appreciated our, previous to last year, the things that we went through to all get together on, on the same page and, and really be clear. I don't feel we were as clear last year and, and together as a corporation as we had been in the past, and that's like no slight on anybody, it just, I didn't feel really great about last year's planning session, and I'm hoping that we can get back to more of a full-bodied strategic planning.
And certainly for me, I agree with you, and I, to me, the part of the, I think the issue was me coming in, so, in that by-election, I only have, you know, getting sworn in in December, December's a wash, right, and so you, you got to try and get it done in a January, February timeframe, and you got to set some of the context for the planning and what you want to accomplish. And so I didn't, honestly, I really felt awkward about it as well, because it just wasn't clear and clean to me in terms of how I kind of had it in my head of what I, but I also appreciated, you got to get some strategic directions for our community and our administration, as you say, who are going to be hooking to the cart to pull hard for the year and meeting those deliverables. So, that's why I'm really excited about, hopefully, we get back into, re-elected, and we get back into that process of having a clean vision exercise for all of us, because we've transitioned over the last six or seven years in terms of, I think, where we were, and where we are, and what we want to be in the future. It's such an important conversation. So, I completely agree with you, and I think it's a team that does it, and it's a team of council, and it's a team of the senior folks. I agree.
Okay, Counselor Malkinson?
Thank you. Mayor Bernier, I realize that it's, you know, going to be a matter that, you know, the next council will have to deal with, but I, I just want to say that I really appreciate what you're saying, you know, recognizing the, the importance of it all, because so much of our direction does come from the vision, mission, guiding principles, and, you know, staff has to vision check in every report that they have, and, you know, provides a great deal of direction for our, our strategic planning that we are, you know, going to do in the next few days. But, you know, more importantly than that, I think it's tied into, well, your vision is literally, you know, where you want yourselves, and that, you know, in our context, the, the community to be in the future, and there's some big, big challenges that are going to be coming up in the next four years, that I think council identifying, you know, where they want to be, you know, with or without those challenges is a, really, really, well, it's incredibly important thing to do.
Yeah, a well-done strategic plan, a well-done strategic planning process is as valuable to us as anything we do, because it really does give our community, our city, the residents, and our staff the understanding of what it is we want to try to shoot for it. And so then you start to build those pillars around it. So, anyway, to me, having six years, and I say this in all honestly sincerity, with Dr. Jago from the University of Northern B.C. on the Northern Health Board, and a man that has an incredible ability for that strategic planning, that strategic visioning component, and having sat there and lived through that, it completely changed my view of somebody who was an operational guy all my life, working, and to viewing it of how important the strategy is of those high-level things. It's tough to explain it, it's tough to, but when you got a good one, you know it's a good one. And so that's, to me, the objective. We want to be, set that process in.
Good for you. Good for all of you.
Any other questions on that one? Item nine-three, a number of conversations with a whole bunch of people in the community over the last number of months about, look, if the city would ever consider looking at a dog park. And so I've asked, I had a bit of a conversation with Barry over the summer, asked him if he could do a little bit of groundwork, just to look at some of the ones that are out there, see what they are, liability issues, insurance issues, all those things. But I wanted to try to bring it back to council to get your guys' view on it in terms of, is it something that you've heard about, and is there some value in terms of us having some conversations about looking at it in some, a little bit more detail? And I just have heard it so many times that I asked Barry to have a look at some of the one, the one in Grand Prairie, and do some preliminary groundwork for me to understand. But I want to bring it back to you, to the board, obviously. Has anybody had any, Counselor Malkinson?
I remember some odd requests in the past for amenities for dogs in the community, and I remember that some of the correspondence that staff had with those folks that were interested were pretty ambitious, well, very ambitious. I'm not sure how I, you know, how I feel about, about that right now. We do have a lot of, we do have a lot of park space in the community. That's an opportunity for, you know, people to, you know, recreate and, you know, take care of their dogs and things like that afterwards, but I, I just wonder, you know, I, I remember the conversations that I had with staff about possible dog park months ago, or about, you know, some of the expenses that were involved, and, you know, the, you know, there's, there's fencing off that's required, you know, possibly a place to wash dogs, and there's all sorts of maybe mowing and special attention and care that goes towards a dog park that I, you know, I guess would be worth looking into beforehand, and I suppose that's a conversation you're trying to initiate right now.
Yeah, just, I, I've never had that, that hasn't been a conversation I've had at this board table over the last year. So, that's why I wanted to get some further detail on it, but I wanted to bring it back to you guys, because obviously, it's a board that decides this stuff, not the mayor. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so, I've heard a lot, too, about people wanting a place where they can run their dogs, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that I would be in favor of looking into it and seeing what the implications are, and if we've got a space that would accommodate that, and, you know, what the financial implications would be, but certainly, if we can look into it, it doesn't hurt to look into it.
Yeah, no, and that's all I'm asking at this point, is just to, we have some investigation into it, because we don't know what the li, I don't know what the liability, the insurance, the capital costs, the, what are some of the regulatory components around it, like all of that stuff, right? And I know that Grand Prairie have an off-leash dog park, and different communities have, and so I just wanted to explore that, but I, when I realized I'd asked Barry to do a little bit, I said, ooh, council's got to do that.
Do you need a motion, your worship?
Um, probably, yeah. Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Malkinson. Discussion? Counselor Malkinson?
Any idea on the timelines? Will it be before or after the election?
It'll be over, after the election. It'll be over the winter. We'll probably do some other preliminary stuff. Barry?
Unless I have a specific direction that you wish a capital proposal for this capital budget, we have a great many capital projects that we're trying to work through on proposals now.
I didn't, forgive me, your worship, I didn't take this as any sort of, well, this motion is any sort of a, or agreement in principle of a dog park, but no more, just on a request for a report on the merits and demerits of it. Okay, thank you.
Discussion? Counselor Wilbur, did you have a question?
Well, I, some of it's been covered, but I was going to say, I'd be interested in all of that information, but also what space is available, and, and, I mean, how much space is needed, and do we even have that to, before we look into anything else, I'm off the top of my head, where would it, where would it go? Where do we have this space?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And so that's, and you know, that's the fulsome, that's kind of looking at the issue, right, in terms of what are the components around it, we can do, we can't do, or, I don't even understand that. So, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Obviously, our nine-four is the RCMP. I just wanted to bring council a brief update on our Staff Sergeant. We lost Staff Sergeant McDonald a number of months ago, position was posted, and so, I've been working with the, as part of our community in, as a partner in the funding of the RCMP, they engage and encourage the mayor of the community to participate in the process if we choose. I absolutely chose to do that, representing us in that process with the RCMP. And so I had a meeting last week, so we went through the interview process, and I met with Superintendent Booth last weekend, Prince George, and so I just wanted to update you that that process is moving forward. We'll hopefully have the candidate in place in the very near future, and it's just waiting until a position is filled that he's, the candidate is currently working in, that they can't release him to the community. We still have Sergeant Richard and Scotty, Sergeant West here, but as soon as Sergeant West leaves, obviously, it's going to put more pressure on filling and getting that candidate in place. So, I just wanted to update you guys in terms of what, how that's unfolding, and hopefully we'll have it completed relatively soon. Item nine, sorry, any questions? Item nine, item nine-five, the, you know, I wanted to just give a quick update on the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts, as it's completed, it's opened. I had some comments from people in, on my Facebook page and saying, okay, when are you guys going to fess up, and how much it costs, and I said, we'll fess up anytime you want, because it gets fessed up every meeting. We get an update on the costing of it, and so, now, I just want to give a high level, we're not, we haven't, obviously, there's still some outstanding completion invoices to be done, but I'm going to talk in kind of a broad, general term here about the completion for the benefit of the public. The completion cost, as we indicated last January, was seventeen-point-six. We still are very confident it's going to be in that seventeen-sixes, our completion budget. There's no, nothing that's come about as a surprise over the last month or two months since we reported it. The revenues, now I'm going to need some help, because I'm going from memory here. Provincial government gave three-point-nine million, federal government gave three-point-nine million, the gaming grants, we allocated approximately a million from the gaming grants, reserves, Jim, was about two million.
Correct, your worship.
And about six million come from the city, and I'm hoping that adds up to seventeen-six.
Well, you had corporate donations in there.
What's that?
There's corporate donations of about eight-hundred thousand.
Oh, and corporate donations of about eight-hundred thousand as well. Thank you. And so, we were, you, obviously, the official opening is now completed, the building is operational, but sometimes, you know, with people who see that, then it raises the spectrum of, okay, well, now are you guys going to tell? We've been telling people all the way along at every meeting, what we've done with the budget, but I want to just kind of clarify that for anybody that didn't have clarity in their own mind about what we did and how we got it finished. Any questions for anybody? Nine-six, I put on here as, as you start to review the end of year, you get some policies that need to be updated, and some of those things, the policies we're going to have that are going to be changed as a result of, now we're going to go four-year terms instead of three, and the council remuneration policy was one that kind of caught my attention. And you know, as I think about how and why people sit at this table, or agree to sit at this table, put their hand up to serve the public, and obviously, remuneration for people, I think, is an issue of how your doors are open to allow people to come and participate, and/or they can't because of financial component. So, if somebody who works every day and has to give up time away... So if somebody who works every day and has to give up time away from their work, what impact on their ability to be able to do this? And, and I don't want in any way to sound like this is offending either myself or Terry or Charlie, but as retired people who have the time and sometimes usually the resources to do it, you can do it and not hindered by, you're giving up away from time from work. Counselor Wilbur, who works, Counselor Schuman, Counselor Kenny, Counselor Malkinson, you have time away from your job that you have to give up in order to sit at this board. And for me, your policy that we have for how people are remunerated for participating should allow them participate, not because of their demographic and their demographic status of where they sit and their capacity and abilities to do it. And I think our board is, and the communities board of the leadership is much better served when it's open to everyone. It represents and it serves the entire population versus sometimes just a restricted piece of that population because of the remuneration. And I believe that to be the case in terms of why we should review the policy as it allows us to best represent our community. And so that's why I raised it as a topic and our policy, remuneration policy says, policy will be set annually based on CPI and da-da-da-da. But does it accurately reflect our abilities of what we want it to accomplish and getting the best, broadest representation? I shouldn't even say best, broadest representation to our community. And that's the only purpose of me raising it and thinking it's a valuable topic of conversation. Because otherwise, if you just do it in the policy and then people just say, well, you're hiding something or you're doing this, or, you know, and it's clearly not the case. Your policy should be to guide your community in terms of where it is you want it to get you to and/or accomplish. Counselor Schuman?
So the last time we looked at this was October twenty-third of two thousand thirteen, so that was just, we just did this. And like, I have no interest, none whatsoever, in digging this up right now. And quite frankly, yeah, so there's three of you that are retired, but there's, Counselor Wilbur and I are like in our mid-forties. We got Duncan here who's in his twenties. Past councils have had different age groups, different demographics. I mean, yeah, I guess if you paid more, you would get other people, but I'm not interested in doing anything with this.
Okay. Counselor Malkinson?
Go ahead.
Okay. I really, really appreciate the way that you're approaching it, you know, the way that we, I remember looking at us, review it in the past was, you know, on sort of a comparables basis, you know, but all the objectives that you outlined there are really important things to consider. I also think that the timing that you're bringing it up with is not bad as well. You guys must all know that United States Congress can't set pay rates during its own term, but only for members of Congress for the next term. I think that's an important, an important thing to consider as well. That was, that was part of my opposition to this, the amendment to our remuneration bylaw in two thousand thirteen that Cheryl mentioned. But I don't know, is there, this is just a preliminary question. It's just through you to staff. Would there be enough time to amend the bylaw before the, before the next council's in place?
Through Your Worship, it would be possible to bring a report at the twentieth of October meeting. And then there could be preliminary readings of a bylaw at the first meeting in November and then finalization of the bylaw at the, what we call the lame duck meeting of council after the election. But your policy requirements are a thirty-day notice to the public for input, so if you wish to go back to the bylaw method rather than the policy method, you could do that. Your current setup would require the thirty-day notice, so no. The, I mean, there are a range of options if you were deciding to take this on. And that would include everything from a citizen committee to new comparisons to whatever. The, the decision would likely fall to the next council.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Wilbur?
I just want to say, I mean, as a counselor that actually has a full-time job and is a grandmother raising a grandchild, that I need daycare, I never once crossed my mind asking to be allowed to sit in this seat because of what the pay was. And we have a very unique age demographic on this council currently that most other councils don't have in other communities. So I think we have a really good cross-base of our community here and honest to goodness, if anybody, in my opinion, was thinking of stepping forward because of the remuneration, you shouldn't even be asking to be here. That isn't why you should be here. And I knew coming forward, I would make sacrifices at my job and I knew my family would have to make sacrifices for me to be here. The money is irrelevant. It shouldn't, to me, should not even be a topic. I'm, to be honest, as Cheryl, not interested in discussing this.
So I certainly, I'm not in any way insinuating that money is an issue for any of us personally sitting here, but does it restrict, my question is, does it restrict segments of our population who can't serve here because of financial consideration? That's the question.
But...
So if we look at who's sitting at the table here, who's representing the people who are less fortunate in the community, the people that are struggling in our community, who's representing those? There's segments of our populat-, I just believe it.
I am.
Well, so I got that, so I got it, but I got it thrown at my, in mind as, by an individual who said, who's speaking from that perspective? And so that's the question the public have of us, right? So I'm not saying we don't, I'm just saying, does it allow for adequate and a cross-section of the demographics of our community, right? And I don't know that it does or it doesn't. And certainly, I'm not here to insinuate in any way that anybody here is doing it either for the money or not for the money. And it's hard not to take it kind of personally when you, when you're here, right, for people when you raise the topic. But the, the policy should be guiding you to getting the best and widest possible representation for your community. That's, if it's doing that, great. That was my question, not anything else. So that's why I raised it. And so I think, and to me, it's a, it's a great conversation to me that maybe not, if this board isn't, but we consider in terms of, in the future of how we interact with the community and asking that question about people, who, who is able to put up their hand and are we getting that from our community? That's the question. Go ahead, Duncan. Counselor Malkinson?
That's, I really, really agree with what you're saying, Your Worship. And I, well, I think that both, well, I've agreed with all of your comments so far. You know, it's, and I can sit on the fence on this one because I'm not really... But no, I think that you don't want the remuneration to be any sort of a barrier to anybody in the community seeking elected office, right? I think that, that's what we've got to keep in mind. Although we do have a, a great deal of diversity that's reflected right now, there's, there's always a opportunity to make sure that things are more perfect. Maybe, this is just a wild idea, maybe we could amend the policy to say that, you know, we'll endeavor to have remuneration that doesn't create any barriers or anything like that, that, you know, creates that balance that you've just spoken of, that allows people to seek office, not, not by, you know, financial constraint, but also, you know, respecting that money is not a, you know, money shouldn't be an incentive for seeking elected office at the same time.
The transparency, I think, for us as a board should be exactly that. We shouldn't be embarrassed, we shouldn't be afraid to talk about it. We should be ensuring that we're trying to guide what's the policy that gets us the best for what we believe for our future. And I, and it may be accomplishing that, as you guys have indicated, right? We've got great representation today and I completely agree with that. But the conversation going forward to me is one that, is a good one to have to engage the community and in terms of saying, you guys should be doing this or should be doing that. And finding out if the policy is working for our community, right? Because I don't know that it is. And I don't know the answer to that, whether it is or it isn't.
I don't want to touch this with a technical...
I hear you. I hear you. Right? Because it is sensitive, right? And obviously, I understand that. So I don't want to...
I was just going to add that, you know, going forward and looking at, you know, population growth, other communities trying to snag our staff and, and all the things are going on, I would rather have those discussions on dollars and cents rather than ensuring that council members are paid more money. I...
It's, it's not really about being, well, that's, that's not the way that Dale's framed it, I don't think. You know, it's, it's not about more or less money, it's just about making sure that people all, you know, that money isn't an obstacle. You know, it's about, it's about money not being an obstacle, but at the same time, you know, recognizing that it's not about the money. That's, that's the way I've seen it. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Counselor Schuman?
The way I see it, money must not be the obstacle because you have a diverse, and even the people that are putting their names forward for the next election, for, for November, right? You have a diverse representation of people putting up their hands and...
But it could always be more diverse, you know? Who are we to say?
We could always be more diverse, but...
No, I'm just saying, who, who's to say that there aren't people that we're reaching right now? I'm sorry, I'm just interrupting.
Jim?
Through Your Worship, I wouldn't advise you proceed with anything unless there's a significant consensus on council, because you can't win. You could be making an argument to keep the pay low so that candidates weren't mobilized against you. You could be making an argument to set it high because you're confident of reelection. There's just no, there is honestly no way to separate individual interests from the community interests in this discussion. So in an environment where you don't have a consensus, I think your best to do nothing.
Yeah, and so honestly, for me, that's exactly, it's one I, I've come across, I wanted to raise it as a topic of conversation. I get the sensitivity for all of us because people can't help but take it personally, but that isn't how I look at it. I looked at it from the perspective of going forward, what's our direction that we want to do to make sure we engage in that conversation. We shouldn't be embarrassed about it. We shouldn't be afraid to talk about it.
So that's why we sort of did this policy the way we did it is, you know, so that it, it increases with the...
CPI.
CPI and, and it sort of removes us from that discussion and, you know, so you, you don't get a new council who's trying to make that decision or, or some, an old council making the decision for a new council and it just sort of gets dealt with like we deal with other things in, within the city. And I liked it. I liked what we did in October of two thousand thirteen because it sort of took it out of our hands, right? We didn't, we don't have to deal with it now. It's, it is what it is and, and I don't want to deal with it. I think it's being dealt with.
Appreciate your feedback, everybody, I do. I do, really. Yeah, that was good. And you know what? I got to add one more because I forgot to put it on and I forgot to raise it the last one. I got asked to sit on a road safety committee provincially by my past connections with ICBC and some of the people I used to work with at ICBC have formed this provincial committee dealing with road safety, planning for communities and the structures and the support and the capacities and tools they have available for road safety planning. And they asked me this summer if I would sit on this committee and I've been to, I've phoned into one meeting and I'm going to be regular involved in that. So I forgot to update council on that at the last meeting and so I'm going to be involved in that committee for, I represent, there's two of us, I think, as mayors, and I think, but I can't remember. But it's just a real large, about thirty, twenty people sitting on it, so.
Sounds good.
That's it for me. Item six point one, I got, item six point one, the, Jamie brought forward the issue on their driveway. Counselor Malkinson?
I move we decline the request for variance, Your Worship.
Thank you. Seconded?
I'll second.
Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor McFadden?
I'm still, have a question about their letter where it says they did what they did so it would be consistent with everybody else in the neighborhood. Is that the case? Have we allowed that to happen?
Through Your Worship, that's exactly the case. You guys changed the rules. They came in after the rules had changed. It's my belief that they were fully advised that the rules had changed. They have a different viewpoint. That's not my understanding of the conversations either with staff or actually with elected officials. So the rules have changed. And the, the residential development committee is looking at additional changes. But when you change the rules, I think you're entitled to expect that the rules are followed. And if you don't wish them to be followed, then don't change the rules.
Further conversation? Further discussion? So in that is exactly the point, I think, that, as Jim's made, that we did change the rules because of the significant impacts that was brought forward by administration on snow removal, the parking on street, the, all those components for us in terms of what we were facing in that regard. And so they're, in that situation, to their point, they have ten or twelve units on each side of the street that are all identical and consistent and now because they didn't get theirs finished since the rules were changed, whether the conversation, discussion and all that, as Jim said, has taken place with them and they were informed, that was what we allowed in the past and since have amended that bylaw. Counselor Malkinson?
There currently are houses being built in the community under the old subdivision bylaw, aren't there?
Through Your Worship, there are houses being built. You haven't changed your zoning requirements around suites in duplexes. You had indicated you're going to do that, you backed off that, you formed a residential committee, there's been no change there. So homes like this, which are duplexes with suites, are still being built. But you have changed the rules around the driveways and a bunch of other things that apply to duplex, let alone a duplex with suites. And everywhere we find one of them with an incorrect driveway, we're...
Correcting it.
We're correcting it.
Counselor Wilbur?
Well, exactly that, we did change the rule on that. I'm sure we gave out proper notification. My other concern was that when Counselor Schuman asked the delegation a question, I didn't feel that question was actually answered, it was skirted around. And the gentleman did make a point of saying that he didn't understand what was in that bylaw. So if you don't understand, then you should be calling our department and having it clarified for you. And I think they've gone ahead and done something knowing they shouldn't have and now they're asking for forgiveness and I'm not prepared to give that forgiveness. We changed the rules for a reason and everybody should be adhering to those rules.
Thank you. Further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And anything further we need to bring forward from mayor's business? That's it. Calvin Crook Center for the Arts update on diary?
So, Your Worship, we had hoped to have the absolute final financial figures for you here as the last diary item ever on the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts because now we've changed from construction issues to operational issues, which really hasn't decreased Duncan's workload one bit.
Yay, Duncan!
You know, the, you know, the military saying, no plan survives the first contact with the enemy, or as Mike Tyson said, everybody has a plan till they're punched in the face. Well, we've been punched in the face on a dozen different issues operationally over there and we're working through all of those. It's just that we, we have all the invoices in, we just did not have the staff time to get that report together, so it'll come on the twentieth and it'll be hopefully your last ever diary item on Calvin Crook.
Center for the Arts.
Center for the Arts, although, I mean, I suppose if you want to hear about the operational issues, we could do that, but they're no different than the operational issues at the arena, which are abundant.
Right.
I'm pretty sure my report on the details of the financial are pretty well answering any question.
Let's just say those weren't to the penny, but what you get will be. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Consent calendar? Strategic priorities?
Through Your Worship, I'm suggesting that you can now cross off number four, which was completing the Shorewater Phase Two and council issuing direction around that. And item one, which was a particular version of the fiscal gap, you've now been forced to go to Plan B. Your Plan B report will come on, on October twentieth. It's actually, could have come on this meeting, but Counselor Parslow had indicated he would really like to be at the meeting where the fiscal gap Plan B came, so that'll come on October twentieth. And then that should complete your strategic priorities for the year.
You know, to me, I was, I was thinking about it the other day as I was looking at the agenda and thinking about, what an amazing year, really, for us in terms of getting, really knocking off some big stuff. really knocking off some big stuff on behalf of the city with the sewer trunk line, Calvin Crook Center, the Shorewater getting some direction. The economic development, I still kind of struggle with it. I wish, wish we had more capacity, right, to be able to do this stuff. But to have knocked off three or four of those really big items is a great accomplishment, I think, on behalf of council and administration.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions? Question and answer?
Signed up.
Committee of the whole?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Media questions?
I just have a bunch of questions for Jim, which I just...
Thanks for the warning. You'll find him in the washroom. Any others? Joe? Jeremy? Okay, and so then now I'm going to ask, we recess to close.
I'm going to, I'm going to be recessed to close.
Duncan, Wilbur, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.